Yeah, I was just, I was telling Cindy that I was looking it up in my book here and it was, it was just over two years ago that we, we talked to her, about two years and one week ago.
And before we start, while you're all here, I'll just say this, I told Amy already, but thank you so much for that wonderful editorial in saying yes and supporting the school bond issue. That was a well-written article and I especially appreciate mentioning the air conditioning.
Great, yeah, yeah, well, thanks. I think it's, as noted, I think it's, it's really telling that all of the people interested in the school board and on the school board are all in support of it. So that, that tells you something right there because people coming at it from different, may disagree on other things, but on that one, they're united. It's a speaking with one voice. So that, that's interesting to me.
That is a good thing.
So, so tell us a little bit, Cindy, about how, what, what you've been doing in the, in the past couple of years, maybe refresh our memories on your background a little bit and then, and why you decided to, to make another run at it?
All right. Well, as I told you a couple of years ago, I was a teacher in the Dubuque Community Schools for 38 years. I was an instrumental music teacher. I was band director at Jefferson for 24 years. And so in that capacity, I taught all three levels. I've been teaching in many different schools because I was an itinerant music teacher. So I've taught in almost all the buildings in the school district, even had a little administrative experience because I was instrumental chairperson for a while. So I have a wide experience that I would like to bring and I have served kids all my life and I would like to continue to serve on the board. The issue of equitable facilities was very important to me two years ago, wanting to see the new middle school build and wanting especially to get air conditioning in all the buildings. And so during the past, and when I lost the election by only 36 votes last time, I decided to keep on working in that regard. So I went to a lot of school board meetings. I was on the community task force that looked at the different sites for the building. And unfortunately, we were not able to find a site that would have a middle school in the neighborhood of the North End and the Point. And that is a disappointment, but no, no suitable site was available. Then went on to become a member of an incredible team on the YES Committee and worked to gather signatures to get the bond, on the petition to get the bond issue put on the ballot and then continued to work to get YES votes with that committee. And so now I would like to continue to serve on the board to follow through on that, to see the projects through to their completion, to make sure that the money is spent well, to make sure that the district sticks to its promise of keeping the tax levy rate unchanged at $14.51 per $1,000 of the taxable evaluation. And also, I want to keep reaching out to community organizations and neighborhood associations to get their ideas and their concerns and also to bring the ideas and concerns of the administration to them. I look at a school board member as a link between the community and the administration. So that's why I would like to run.
Great. That's great to hear. So just to talk a little bit about, about the bond issue, as part of that committee, how, how do you respond to, I mean, you know, you, you mentioned as, as a board member, you would, you would take the responsibility of trying to, to hold up the, the promise of not raising the levy rate. That, that's a, you know, that's one of the, the sticking points. People say, well, how do we trust that that's not going to happen?
The levy rate is made up of a lot of different little levies in, you know, for example, operating expenses. And I can say that the whole issue of the new middle school started with a study that Stan Reingans actually proposed. And he did a, a study of how much does it cost to run Roosevelt in a particular year? And how much does it cost to run Jefferson? And how much does it cost to run Washington? So these are not made up figures. These are actual figures. So you compare what was actually spent to run Roosevelt one year and what was spent to add Washington and Jefferson and added those two schools together and then compared. And the difference was $3.5 million because you're considering staffing, maintenance of the building, you know, a lot of different things. So that, that is not, that is a given. So that was where the whole thing started. And then they, they looked at that issue. And then within that levy rate, as I said, there are a lot of different levy rates. So the bond issue, the bond referendum, the issuing of bonds, we don't have a bond debt service right now. That would be added, but operating expenses would go down, declining enrollment, some of the operating expenses would go down. So that levy might go down. And also, we could save interest by issuing a general obligation bond. I think they set around $8 million in interest because general obligation bonds are backed by property tax. They have less risk than the SAVU bonds, which come from the sales, the one and a half cent sales tax. So that's a savings. And it's a fallacy to think that we're going to go out and buy, borrow, we, the district is going to go out and borrow $150 million all at once. They're going to borrow the money as needed. So when you start out, you're only going to be borrowing the money for the planning of the, and design of the building. And then later on, when you actually start building it, then you'll be borrowing more money for materials and labor, et cetera. But by the time you're borrowing that money, some of the first bonds will already be paid down through tax money. So it's kind of a fallacy to go, oh, we're going to get $150 million for this whole period. It will fluctuate. So between all of those different things going on and the, and the way there are different levies, you reduce some levies, you increase others, but the top line remains at $14.51 for $1,000. So that's how they do it.
Yeah. Do you think though, it's, there's a, a trust issue there with, with some voters that say, well, I don't, how do we know that in two years, the state will probably give you less money? And then how else are you going to do it?
I'm sure there is because the economy is not good and money is important for people and taxes certainly are an expense that they can't control. And I'm sure there is, you know, as much as you say it, there surely, surely is that mistrust. But there again, I think that's why, I don't think you can expect the public to necessarily come to board meetings. And I think you need to reach out to them. So that's why we've been trying through the YES Committee to go out to different community organizations and neighborhood associations, as I said, to go out and bring the information to the people and to be more transparent if we can be.
You seem as, just observing kind of some of the, the people who have written, we've gotten a couple of letters to the editor in support, in support, your support and some of the signs I'm seeing, it, it looks like you're getting support from a conservative contingent. Do you feel like that, is that just a coincidence or is, are, is that a group that, that tends to maybe not be supporting the bond levy?
What I've, what I've noticed is it's not so much liberal and conservative, but surprisingly, it's more generational. And it seems like the older people that are naturally living on fixed incomes and more concerned about money and taxes and budgeting, I think they're more concerned about it and tend to be more against it. But the younger people really surprises me. Sometimes 10-year-olds, I was out at the Fair Collecting Signature and a group of 10-year-olds came over and said, can we sign? Can we sign? And I said, no, no, you can't sign yet. Or they would bring over their parents and say, Dad, Dad, you gotta sign this. And then the younger people in their early twenties and thirties going through with baby carriages, they were coming over and, and all in favor of it. And you stop and think about it, and probably the younger generations, the only time they were without air conditioning was when they were in school, probably. So they are very, and surprisingly, the air conditioning is a, a big factor. Even, you know, it's just a big factor, the air conditioning. And then having the equity, I know, I remember I said this to Bob before, that traditionally in Dubuque, I'm a fifth generation native. So traditionally in Dubuque, we've always had equal schools. And Washington and Jefferson, originally, the original buildings are identical schools. And Lincoln and Marshall and Bryant and Fulton were all built as identical schools. And so our tradition is everyone is treated equitably wherever you live in the city. And I think we're starting to get away from that because 50% of our schools, our middle schools are modern, secure, energy efficient buildings and 50% aren't. And 50% of our elementary schools are, are air conditioned and 50% are not. And I think that's a, a situation that people would like to correct right now.
Since, since you've gotten involved so much, particularly in the last two years, and, and I know our reporter Elizabeth says she sees you at a lot of school board meetings and committee meetings and that sort of thing. What, what would you say you've learned about the process or the board that maybe you didn't know as a candidate a couple of years ago?
I, I have a great admiration for the staff that we have hired because they really do their homework when they're investigating any kind of a job as far as what's needed for the bids that they let. They have requirements for bidding and they are always well-prepared and well-organized. And they alert the board to what's coming up. And then they report step by step, the progress that's being made. So I'm very, very impressed by the staff that we have. That was good. And then, but then the, the one frustrating thing that I would like to look into is at board meetings, when people come and speak to the board and the board, I think it's it's something to do with legal requirements and whatever, they cannot respond to people that speak to the board. So it makes them look kind of arrogant or something or unfeeling. And it's not really true. But I would like to see if there isn't a way we can say, thank you for your comments, or we'll consider what you said, or have some kind of response so that people know they are, they are listening, they do act on it. But just at the time, all they can do is open it up, listen and then close it down. And, and it just seems like there should be more response to the public. And I think that tends to, to foster some mistrust by the public.
What do you think would be the most challenging part for you personally, if you, if you are elected to the board?
Probably the most challenging, but the most exciting thing would to be involved in the actual building, the design of the new middle school. There's so many elements in it, but I'm sure the architects will, you know, get information from teachers and staff. But so many different things to look at, like what the brain health room should look like, or the, or what they call it Roosevelt Retreat Room, how close it needs to be to the classrooms, do you put the, the offices of the guidance counselors by the retreat, retreat room? Do you have them separate? How do you get into the retreat room? And what's in there? What color scheme? Do you have music? Do you have open concept? Do you have private areas? I mean, there are just so many, that's just one area, you know. But I think it'd be really challenging to look at that, look at the traffic patterns outside the school. That would be very important. So it would be, you know, a challenge to keep up with all that, but it would be exciting to do.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, thank you. I'll let my colleagues jump in here as you're ready.
So Cindy, I'm sorry, another, another question related to the bond issue. You know, as you alluded to at the beginning of the conversation, this editorial board endorsed the YES vote. But we all recognize that it's a heavy lift to get 60% plus one vote to pass that. And in the event that that bond issue does not pass and you are elected to the school board, what, what's next? What, what do we, what do you do differently? Or what do you advocate for as a, a board member? Do we just go back in a year and, and try to make the sale again? Do we revise the plan and, and make the dollar amount smaller? What, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, the problem is that we, that the district is short in their funds. They are spending more than they're taking in. And so what's happening is, it means that the reserve balance is going down. And as you know, in the state of Iowa, you can't spend below zero. So once, you can't have a negative balance. So that means that if this is not adopted, difficult decisions will have to be made. And I would like to be involved in those decisions. And it, it could mean the closing of other buildings. It could mean reductions in staff. It could be reductions in programming. And as a teacher, I've been through this several times where cuts have had to be made. And in being in the music department, we were usually on the front line, to tell you the truth. So the last thing I would like to see cut is staff and programs because those things direct students directly, you know, they affect students very much. That's our primary purpose. So that's the last thing that I would like to see cut. And we can, and they are. Another thing I'm impressed with by the district is the efficiencies they make in utilities and the efforts they make to save on electricity especially, like they've installed new solar panels at Sageville School, projects like that. So I mean, you can save money in those areas, but ultimately, if the bond issue doesn't go through, there may be some tough decisions. And that's where you're going to need to get a lot of community input and try to figure out which way people want to go. So I'm very hopeful that the issue will pass.
Would, would you advocate that if it doesn't pass, that the issue go back to the voters again next year? And, and you know, would it be the same look? Or would it be a scaled down version? Or how do you feel about that?
There are all different kinds of possibilities. You could do that, but every year that passes, you're going to go more and more into the hole. The thing that has supported us the last two or three years has been the COVID funds, surprisingly. A lot of federal money came in unexpectedly and that's kept us, kept the district going. Now, beginning this fall, those COVID funds are not coming in anymore. So now we're on our own. So, or the district's on their own to provide the funds. So the longer we wait, the worse the problem will get.
Cindy, Mike stole my question, but fortunately I have a backup.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you talked about the, the role that a school board member has in terms of being a liaison and a conduit between the community members and the, the district administrators and staff. You know, there has been a lot, especially in recent years, of more active interests and participation by parents in the educational process and decision-making. And, and so I guess, and you, but you also mentioned, you know, how much respect you have for the, for the staff and the educational folks in the district. I guess, how, how do you find that balance between the professional opinions and experiences of staff members versus parental input?
Oh, I think parental input is very important. I think we have to remember that in 95% of the cases, parents love their children. They want what's best for their children. They're concerned for their children. And we have to take their concerns seriously. We have to listen to them. We have to, you know, sometimes it's just miscommunication. We have to listen to them. We have to bring that to the board. We have to look for the solutions and the compromises that can be made. I don't think we should have an adversarial relationship between the district staff or, and teachers and parents. I think it's more of a cooperative teamwork, you know. And if parents are concerned, then I think we're all concerned and we want, teachers and staff included, and board members certainly, we're all concerned in addressing those issues and coming to a resolution.
One specific area where that has sort of come to a head in, in some districts is in the area of which books should be allowed in the classroom and the whole concept of book bans. Do you have a take or a position on that?
Right. I think there should be a high threshold in banning any material. We're governed by the state law, of course. And it's my understanding that we here in Dubuque are largely in compliance. And there would be very little, if anything, we would have to change. But if an issue comes up, then I think certainly as a board, we could come to a reasonable decision after listening to all sides about what is scientific biological material and what is inappropriate discussion in a classroom. I'm not saying I would never ban anything. I think there are some things that could be inappropriate, but it would be a very high threshold.
Thank you.
And I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be the one banning. I would be the one voting to ban. And just one vote, but to understand that it's, oh, we're only talking about banning in the school. We're not banning it in, in the public domain. But you have to remember that students are required to come to school, required to be in the classroom. So I think we have to have some standards when they're required to be there. They don't have a choice.
Great. Thank you.
Ally, got a question?
You guys asked all of my questions. As soon as I was queuing up to ask the next one, Bob or I asked it. Let me think what I was going to ask. You, well, you've been pretty active in sort of following the board the last couple of years, you know, from 2021, 2023. The last few years have been pretty, pretty busy ones, pretty crazy ones for the boards with a lot of decisions around kind of aftermath of COVID and soccer complex and bond issue and all the other things that don't come to mind because there were so many of them. Are there, is there anything that you can think of from, from your observation of the board in the last couple of years where you think maybe, maybe the board could have done something differently or should have taken a different approach?
Well, one thing that was brought up on the, on the board with the sale of the soccer complex, and if this ever comes up again, I would do this, is a board, one of the board members suggested that after the bids are taken in, we do a second round and say, without opening the bids, do a second round and say, hey, there are three bids on this property. Is this your best bid? Would you like to make another bid? Would you like to make a final bid that would be your best offer? And other board members felt, well, we don't really need that one bid, one round of bids is enough. But I think, given the experience with the soccer complex, I, the next time if that ever came up, I would recommend doing that. Because then it gives people, because they might be bidding lower because they think no one else is going to bid, then when they find out they're in a competition, it might change their strategy. And then it could end up bringing more money into the district and maybe, you know, get a different purchaser. So that would be my only question. Yeah, so there.
But ultimately, you would have got voted the same way they did?
On, and most issues, I'd have to say that I was in agreement with what they did. Yes.
I'm sorry. Did you have a follow-up, Ally?
Oh, it was a bit of a different question, but I was
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, we also, also in talking, we talked about the bond issue. So if that passes, the, they'll build the new middle school beside Washington and Jefferson would be closed. What would you advocate happens with the, the old Jefferson building? Do you have anything in mind?
I think we should put it up for sale as they did with Fulton. Certainly, we're going to need the funds. And I want to say, I'm, I, I went to Fulton also. That was my grade school. And I am delighted to see what has happened with Fulton because it's become the Fulton Dream Center. It works for kids all year round. They're trying to get funds to renovate the building, get air conditioning in there. They have some exciting plans for what the building could become. And so it's like a new life for them. And on the other hand, they have used the Jewel Bus System, which I'm also in favor of, to help transport kids from the Fulton area down to Prescott School. They have a resource officer that rides on that bus. And so that's made the transportation better. And I think at least some of the, well, the parents have seen that when they went to Prescott, they kind of had a wow factor, like, wow, look at this building inside. Look what it, what the opportunities it provides for our kids, even though we have a longer distance to go. When we get there, it's really pretty awesome. And just look at the beginning of this school year, those kids that went to Fulton were in a fully air-conditioned building now. They didn't, didn't have to suffer with any of the heat issues. So it, it was a positive for them in many ways, even though it's sad that when you lose a neighborhood school, there were still a lot of positives for them. And I think the same could be true for Jefferson. I'd like to explore ways we can use the Jewel Bus System to keep North End and Point parents connected with their school, make it feel more like it is their neighborhood school. And that's not only during the school day, but so that there's transportation after school, so they can participate in after-school sports and music activities and mentoring, whatever goes on after school.
So Aside from the things that we've, we've talked about, Cindy, what do you think are, are other challenges that the, the school district and the school board will be facing in the, in the years ahead?
Okay. Well, one thing they're, they're talking about is the change in graduation credits to make more electives available, perhaps reduce the credits for graduation. And I think that's good because it helps kids connect with their future career. And I like what they're doing with concurrent credits, where you get credit for college and high school at the same time. And that is, and it's something that parents don't pay for, but there's a small reimbursement to the colleges. And I, and I don't believe that's school district money. I believe that's outside money. Anyway, that's very exciting. And the apprenticeships and the internships and, you know, just connecting people with their future job and trying to keep the workforce local, keep it connected here. I think that's a very exciting program and would support that. And the other thing they do is they have mentors and instructional coaches that, and the new middle school will make this even more possible because you can have small pullout areas and you can, I'm sorry, that's my phone, just ignore. You can have small pullout areas where they can instruct students individually and help them catch up on things that they miss in the classrooms. And so I think that's very important.
Okay. And if you, if you are elected to the board, what do you think would be your go-to method for getting information from, getting the pulse of the, of the citizenry? You know, you want to be an advocate for citizens. How, how would you go about hearing from them?
I believe I'll have a school board account where they can email. And then just to make myself available to neighborhood associations. That would be one way to connect and community groups.
Cindy, along those lines, what are you doing today in terms of, are you, are you campaigning? Are you door knocking? How are you, how are you getting input today and reaching out as part of the campaign?
The district is so vast that, that I've used the Dubuque advertiser to be my door knocker and the Golden View. And so that's how I've been trying to get out to people. And then just going to community groups, people that I know and saying, here, here are a few cards. Could you be a door knocker for me? Can you spread it around amongst your friends? And whatever. So just, just in that way, hope some people will write letters to the editor for me. That's something I've been asking for lately. So.
And when you do speak with constituents, what kinds of things are, are you hearing?
Mostly it's about the school bond issue. I think that's pretty much top of everyone's list. Yeah.
Are there other things that, I mean, we talked a little bit about the books issues that came out of the Iowa Legislature, but there were other changes in the Iowa Legislature as well. Do you think, you know, not the least of which, the, the education savings accounts? How, how would you anticipate that or some of the other issues, you know, to, to play out in, in the district?
I'm glad you bring that up because I was trying to go, am I for these education savings accounts? Or am I for the public school? Am I for, and then I thought, why? I don't think this has to be a choice. I think Iowa is rich enough that we can support public education up to the level it should be and still have the ESAs. Because I can see there, there can be a lot of good in the ESAs because you can have schools that would be tailored to help students that have needs that maybe the public school cannot meet and, or not cannot meet, but has more difficulty meeting than a school that might be designed specifically for their needs. And I, I believe that the state legislature should have and could have had given more. had given more support to the public schools. The reason government supports the public schools, as John Adams said, is you cannot have a democracy unless you have an educated electorate. That's why government is involved in the public schools. So everyone really has an obligation to support public schools, no matter your age, no matter whether you have children or you don't have children. It's a public responsibility. So I think the state of Iowa can do that, and maybe we should tie that aid to inflation, as they do with social security. So that's an area I would like to, if I were on the board, would like to explore too. How can we get more aid for our public schools, you know, have maybe a flat 3%? It will be 3%, but then it will fluctuate if inflation goes up. I would like to see something like that. So we don't have the debate every year, what's, what is it going to be? What is it not going to be? Just have some kind of formula that could be followed. And then, in addition, as I say, the ESAs, evidently, some of that ESA money is helping, like St. Columpilis, to do a bigger renovation than they had planned. And that was exciting. So, well, I, I, you know, our school districts, we've always had two school districts. School systems here in Dubuque, and they've always cooperated. And I I think we need cooperation, not to be adversaries.
Were you surprised to see the limited number of when we we did some reporting around that, how many public schools, how few public, public school students
Not in Dubuque, because we have a great staff, and the teachers I've encountered really care about our kids. And they work with parents. And I don't think we have the issues here that that are issues in other school districts, you know. I think we have a fine school district, and I want to keep it improving and keep working to support our staff and our parents and what we're trying to do. So it doesn't surprise me. And I know there's space capacity issues in the parochial schools too. So I'm sure they'll try to address that. The bottom line is, we want our our students to be educated well. Because what we have in our schools is what eventually ends up in our community.
Yeah, good point. Anything else that we haven't asked you about that maybe comes to mind as an issue that that you're concerned about, Cindy?
No, I think you hit everything, so.
What about anybody else? Any, any parting thoughts here? So. Well, I appreciate you meeting with us today, and, you know, good for you for being so involved in the in the district and going to the meetings and all that, and putting yourself out there as a candidate, so.
Thank you, and I appreciate your time and interest. Yeah, you guys do a great job, really.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Okay. Bye.
Thank you, Cindy.